You can tell.
I don't know yet. So I think we have to work on that.
Suspenders.
I must have thought about these things.
Fun socks.
It's halfway.
Okay. For the public works condition, I've got Bruce's memo, but you'll be sure to read it.
Yeah, it's in this, it's in their hearing outline and in the slide.
Did he beer, how are you?
We're fine. If it's sitting in my, if it's sitting in my closet. I'll talk about that. We're done.
Are you gonna go back in?
Counsel, I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Do I have a motion to adjourn our special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Hey, thank you for joining us. For the record, it is Tuesday, October 18th at 6 o'clock. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Councilmember Byrd?
Here.
Mayor DeVeard?
Here.
And Councilmember Cavanagh is absent.
Thank you. Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. If you all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ah, I don't see Larry.
Yep.
There you are.
You can't miss him.
I didn't put my glasses on, Larry. So item number three is our community invocation. If you all join us in our invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection, we welcome you, Larry, to our council chambers.
It's always a pleasure. Are we awake, Ty?
I almost said aye.
Oh, okay. Let's pray. Our dear heavenly Father, I think I share with many others the frustration over our current national election. But for us in Meridian, we are so blessed with having quality council members and a wonderful mayor. On behalf of our citizens, I ask that you continue to bless them as they lead our growing community. I pray tonight for some ballot issues that our citizens must vote upon in a couple of weeks. Give us common sense and wisdom as we vote on. New national leaders from Idaho, including a national president and vice president. New state and county leaders. New bond issues that affect our youth. May we, as a citizenry, always keep in mind the weakest of our citizens, the elderly, the poor, and the youngest, as we vote on issues this year. Tonight, I ask your special blessing for our police, firemen, and EMTs. I stopped in a fire station this past week, and the visit was so friendly and encouraging by two firemen who answered all my questions. Fall rains are now here. Days are shorter. School buses are everywhere, and it seems that road repairs are now year-round. I pray for the safety of our children going to school, especially those high school students with their first cars. If dads could only see their sons showing off at noon hour. Protect these lads. We've all been there ourselves. Our faith leaders gather this Thursday for lunch, and we have a great city in part because of these leaders. May we continue to be a community that honors you and your instructions to us in the Bible. Lastly, let me just pray for the many city employees who keep our water clean, our sewers flowing, our roads swept, the paperwork moving through the bureaucratic maze, inspectors, clerks, et cetera. As we see our city poised to approach the 100,000 figure this next year, new construction is virtually everywhere. Continue to bless this council as it makes good decisions for one of this nation's best communities. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. And Larry, I think you just earned yourself. You can deliver my state of the city.
Okay, whatever.
Thank you so much for your words. Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Item number five, we scratched, we don't have a proclamation. Item six, or eight C, the ordinance number is 16-1709. Under 9A, the resolution number is 16-1174. And under 10A, the ordinance number is 16-1710. With that, I move we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda as read. All those in favor say aye.
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 All ayes. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve the consent agenda as published, and for the mayor to sign, the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move to item 8A, which is a public hearing for H 2016-0115. And we'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The first action item on your agenda this evening is a miscellaneous application. You don't get those too often, but this application applies to a irrigation lateral easement for the McMullen lateral, and some amendments to the approved preliminary plat for Bainbridge subdivision. So the subject project and easement are located south, about a half mile south of Chindon Boulevard, and just east of 10 Mile Road. So in 2003, when the preliminary plat for Bainbridge was approved, the lateral in this area was proposed to be piped, with one-half of the easement contained within a 15-foot-wide common lot on this property and a pathway over the top, and the other 15 feet of the easement on the adjacent development to the south, what was then known as Volterra North. The applicant has submitted the miscellaneous application in accord with UDC 113A6C, which requires irrigation easements wider than 10 feet to be included in a common lot. Notice has been submitted to surrounding property owners as required for the public hearing, and we do have a letter from the irrigation, the Users Association for the lateral that they are agreeing to allow the easement to be located within the building lots, provided that the HOA for both developments be responsible for all repairs through a license agreement. The, in lieu of the pathway that was approved back in 2013, the applicant proposes that a swimming pool in Phase Two that was not part of the original approval back in 2013 be allowed to replace that pathway as one of the required amenities. Staff does support the proposed replacement amenity, and in this case, putting that easement, although wider than the 10-foot we typically allow in buildable lots, to be included on, buildable lots within this project, and then future development to the south. So unless there's any questions, that's the staff report I have. And again, would stand for any questions.
Caleb, council, any questions?
I have none.
Would the applicant like to make comment? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Van Elge. I'm with Brighton Corporation, 12601 West Explorer, Boise, Idaho. We concur with staff's report. We don't have anything really more to add to it, other than it didn't look like the pathway was going to be, come to pass. The additional easement on the south, or the common area on the south, did not come to fruition. And staff suggested and called us in to discuss this, because it seemed that the 15-foot was just not going to be wide enough for a pathway along that boundary, so. So we're here to discuss that. I guess this ordinance came into play to require a public hearing sometime this year. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here, but it kicked in on us. I'll answer any questions, if you have any.
Counsel, any questions?
I have none.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There were no citizens that signed up to provide testimony. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, council, any questions for staff or the applicant?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
No. I move that we close the public hearing on H 2016-0115.
Second.
0115, excuse me.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes must carry.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
That we approve H 2016-0115.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item 8A. Any discussion from council? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Item 8B is a public hearing continued from October 4th on H 2016-0066. I will ask for staff comments as we open the public hearing.
Any Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you said, this is the, an application for Blakesley Common Subdivision, which is an application for both preliminary plat and for annexation and zoning. So, site consists of approximately 12.01 acres of land, which is zoned RUT in Ada County. It's located on the south side of East Eustick Road between North Locust Grove Road and North Eagle Road. Surrounding properties to the north is East Eustick Road and single-family residential properties in the Champion Park subdivision, which is zoned R8. To the east, we have single-family residential properties zoned R2 and R1. To the south, we have single-family residential properties zoned RUT in Ada County. And to the west, we have single-family residential properties zoned RUT in Ada County. There's no history on this property, since they're applying for annexation. The comprehensive plan, future land use map for the property is medium-density residential. As I said, they're asking for annexation and zoning of approximately 12.01 acres of land with an R15 zoning district. The preliminary plat, as you see here, consists of 74 building lots and 12 common lots, and they proposed R15 zoning district. Access is proposed for this site via one access from East Eustick Road, which is indicated here by my pointer. For future connectivity, the applicant is proposing to provide two stub streets, one to the south and another to the west. And the applicant has also consented and revised their plan to provide a stub street to the east, to this parcel here, to limit the direct access, once this property develops to accessing Eustick Road directly. Due to the limited vehicular connectivity to the property, and due to the fact that the property lacks a secondary access point currently, the fire code limits the development to 30 homes. Once a secondary or emergency access point is provided, that meets the requirements of the fire department, the applicant will be allowed to construct additional homes. The plat indicates an emergency access across lots 40 through 42 of Block 3. So as you can see here with my pointer, this is, this is where the proposed emergency access, and will, the applicant has indicated they're in coordination with the adjacent property owner to get that emergency access easement across to Wingate Lane, where the fire department does have access. And they are going to be required to do that before a final plat is recorded, just seeing the conditions. The applicant submitted a phasing plan that indicates the emergency access will be in the second phase. As I said, the number of homes approved with the second phase, which, based on the phasing plan, is about 40 between Phases 1 and 2, and will be greater than 30, so therefore, the applicant will need to provide a recorded emergency access out to Wingate Lane prior to submission of the second final plat, or change their phasing plan to accommodate that. The applicant is proposing five common driveways in this project. All common driveways should comply with the standards in the UDC, and homes abutting those common driveways should take access. The plat as proposed does meet that standard. The applicant is proposing to construct all two- and three-bedroom single-family homes. Four parking spaces per unit are required, with at least two in an enclosed garage and two in a driveway. The submitted site plan, as I said, depicts five common driveways, from which the applicant is requesting to allow a five-foot garage setback. The lots include essentially every lot that touches a common driveway. So the common driveways are 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. The applicant is asking for alternative compliance to reduce the parking on 25 of the lots in the development, and to allow the parking to be located in a number of parking lots to be located in close proximity to the subject homes. For the number of lots, which is 25, the UDC requires that the applicant provide 50 off-street parking spaces on a driveway. The applicant is proposing 19 off-street parking spaces to be located in close proximity to the subject properties. Just as a point of clarity, the applicant is still proposing to provide two in the driveway, but for 25 of the lots, they're not, excuse me, two in a garage, but for 25 of the lots, they're proposing to not have a driveway. So essentially, they've, and you can't see very well, but they've included some additional parking along the clubhouse, as well as they are allowed to park on one side of these wider streets, but several of these more narrow streets, ACHD has indicated that they are not wide enough to allow parking on either side. So they're asking to reduce the number that's required on the driveways, and to allow some off-street parking as parking for this community, and they've indicated that because of the 55 and older community that they're catering to, arguably, the parking demand will be less. So according to staff's recommendation, the applicant has altered their plan a little bit. We recommended that they provide two parking stalls at the end of each of the common driveways to help alleviate some of that, and to provide some parking that's off-street that is closer to those homes, to help accommodate for the reduction in parking, and they've revised their plan to accommodate that. So staff's recommendation will bring the number of off-street parking spaces for those 25 homes to 29, or a little greater than 50% of what the UDC requires. A certain number of the 19 proposed off-street parking spaces, as I said, will be allocated to the proposed clubhouse. And the clubhouse can still meet their required parking based on the square footage of that proposed clubhouse. So in considering the alternative compliance, staff is supportive for the following reasons. As I said, the development is going to be marketed to the 55 and older demographic, limiting the number of vehicles that will be needed to be accommodated per unit. The width of the proposed streets, specifically streets noted as Street G and Street F, are in proximity to the lots for which alternative compliance is requested, and can accommodate parking at one side of the street. 25-foot-wide street buffer is required along East Eustick Road, which is considered an arterial street. Staff recommends that the buffer be constructed with the first phase of the development. There is an existing fence along Eustick Road that also needs to be removed and relocated to the interior edge of the landscape buffer. Landscaping is required along all pathways. The applicant has, their plan complies with the UDC requirements, and they have modified their plan slightly to accommodate some of staff's additional requests. We requested that they provide a pathway through this central open area, and they've accommodated a 15-foot common lot here, which will accommodate a 5-foot pathway and 5 feet of landscaping on either side to help get folks back out to the street. A minimum of 10% qualified open space is required to be provided for the development, based on the area of the plat, which is approximately 12.01 acres. A minimum of 1.2 acres of qualified open space is required. A total of 12.5% of qualified open space is proposed, consisting of half the street buffer along East Eustick Road, the regional pathway along the south slough. You can't see very well here, but they're required to construct a portion of the regional pathway along the slough here. Their property touches that boundary. So as I said, to increase the usability of the central open space, staff did recommend that they make some changes and accommodate that pathway, and they have done so. Staff is supportive of the amenity package for the development. The applicant has changed their amenity package slightly from what their original proposal was. They are recommending that they, or requesting that they be allowed to swap out the proposed pool for a proposed outdoor kitchen for the clubhouse. Staff sees no issue with that. With that, staff is recommending approval, and will stand for any questions you have. Having said that, with a summary of the commissioned public hearing, the applicant, Wendy Sharif, was in favor. Ron Walsh and John Blakesley were also in favor. John Blakesley commented. I was the staff that presented the application, as Bill Parsons and Andrea Pogue also commented. Issues of public testimony were the current property owner at that time, and indicated that he would like to remain in the home until the particular phase, which, according to their phasing plan, was Phase 3. I believe their, their plan has changed slightly. I will let the applicant discuss that. Key issues of discussion by the commission were timing of construction of the emergency access, and if there is an easement in place to cross the adjacent property, how the phasing is laid out, and the timing of the phasing. In which phase should the Blakesley home be demolished? As I said, the applicant can discuss that a little bit. I think their plans have changed slightly. Is bonding for the landscaping improvements appropriate for this development? Does the project still have sufficient amenities if the pool is removed from the amenity package? Is the development adequately parked with the requested reduction in the number of off-street parking spaces? Timing of the utility connection, if the existing home is to remain for any period of time? The potential to include in the development agreement provisions that this be a 55 and older community, and that the lot number be capped at 74? Whether to provide a common drive or a street to the property adjacent to the northeast corner of the property? The following were commission changes to the recommendations by staff. Modified Condition 1.1.1D3 to read as follows. Construct the proposed clubhouse, outdoor kitchen, and associated parking on Lot 20, Block 4, as proposed. The applicant shall obtain CCC and DES approval prior to applying for a building permit to develop the lot. Modified Condition 1.1.2E to read as follows. The applicant shall provide a stub street to the south or west boundary of parcel number S1105120653, which, if I go back to the aerial, is the lot indicated here, just for clarification. Add Condition 1.1.1F to read as follows. The development shall be limited to residents who are 55 years of age and older. Add Condition 1.1.1G to read as follows. The development shall be limited to 74 single-family lots. There are no outstanding issues for the council. As I said, written testimony was received by Wendy Sharif, the applicant's representative. Commission did recommend approval. There was one slight modification that the applicant has requested, and that Public Works has been willing to accommodate. They're modifying Condition 2.1.2 to read as follows. Developer shall be required to provide a second water main connection to the project to create a looped system. The second connection can be a second connection to Eustick Road per the Public Works Department. However, a mainline valve will need to be installed in the Eustick Road main at the new T location to provide a means of isolation. With that, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Counsel, any questions?
I have none at this time.
Okay, is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Wendy Kirkpatrick Sharif. I'm a planner with Horrocks Engineers, and our address is 5700 East Franklin Road, Suite 160, Nampa, Idaho, 83687. Good evening. I'm here this evening with Blakesley Common Subdivision, just to tell you a little bit, give you more of a background on the project. This is actually through, through our CCNRs and through our development agreement, is going to be restricted as a 55 and over community. I think if you've got the aerial up, this is a perfect location for this type of project. It's an area where seniors and 55 and over folks will be close to commercial. This is an area where some fairly dense development has happened, especially to the north recently. Meeting with the neighbors, once we, everyone found out this was going to be a 55 and over community, single-family homes, they, the neighbors think it fits in very nicely with this neighborhood, with some existing county subdivisions. There's a real need for this type of housing product in Meridian, in the Treasure Valley. Just kind of as an example, my parents retired out here in Meridian a couple of years ago to be near grandkids, and they bought a house in Vienna Woods. And they're in their 70s with an 1,800-square-foot home on an 8,000-square-foot lot, you know, having to pay a neighbor kid to take care of the lawn, four bedrooms, you know, three bathrooms. And really, what they needed was a type of housing product that's being proposed here, where it's a smaller footprint, large kitchen, entertaining areas, large master bedrooms, landscaping maintained by the HOA, and really, less maintenance for an active senior. So it's the amenities, they're going to be nearby, and the commercial areas where we're near Eagle Road, and this, it's going to be, it's a perfect location, and I think with the amenities they're proposing with a clubhouse, we are actually proposing a swing pool. Again, that's back on the table. For this project, it's, we have a micro path, we have a, we're constructing a part of the regional pathway system in the southern part of the project. It's going to be an ideal senior community, so we're excited about that. Some of that didn't come across in the staff report, but this is going to be an upscale senior 55 and over community, and that will be restricted through the development agreement. Just to kind of give you a little more background on the project, we are on the south side of Eustick between Locust Grove and Eagle. Quite a bit of density in the area. We have Champion Park subdivision to the north, and some existing county subs surrounding us. The amenities we're proposing, again, a section of the Meridian regional pathway. We have 10% open space. There'll be a fair-sized clubhouse with an entertaining area, and then also a swimming pool is going to be proposed. And we're also going to be putting in, this was actually a really good recommendation we had from staff, we have a large interior open space area in the center of the project, and we're going to be putting in a micro path to kind of open it up and provide some additional access to that open space area, and it'll give folks a pathway to get to the clubhouse. So that's a nice addition, and that came courtesy of Josh and Bill. So we're glad to go ahead and make that change. And staff has been, has been great to work with. We come in with a couple different concepts with this plan, and they've really helped us kind of narrow down our choices, and helped to shape the direction of the project, and they've been great to work with, and I think it's a better project, thanks to the work that we've done with them. I wanted to go through and clarify a couple of the things on the parking that we brought up. So this development's a total of 74 homes. It is kind of a clarification, 22 of the homes, I'll kind of use my board, 22 of the homes, not 25, so just the homes in. 22 of the homes, not 25, so just the homes in the southern area, are going to be accessed off of common drives.
Wendy, I'm sorry. Can you use the screen so the people in the audience can see what you're pointing at?
All right. Oh, do I pick a color? I'm still a fan of low-tech. Okay. So it's just this area. So the common drives, just in the southern area, this is the area where, due to some site constraints, we're putting in common drives, and we're requesting to have a 5-foot setback from the garage off of those common drives. It's 22 out of the 74 homes. We're proposing to have these reduced drives. All of these homes will have a two-car garage. And just to kind of go through the streets in this area, so this area... So this area in here, we do have a standard driveway and standard garage. So it's just houses in this area. We also are proposing, there's an additional 18 off-street parking stalls that are in a close proximity to this area. So we have a number of them near the clubhouse. We have some additional parking stalls here. And at the end of each of the common drives, we're going to provide two additional parking stalls that will just be for residents in that area. So we have 18 parking stalls and an additional two stalls at the end of each of the common drives. So we feel like with this being... And we've worked closely with staff to make sure we're meeting a recommendation that they were comfortable with, but with this being a senior community, where you typically have folks who have downsized, fewer cars, you don't have teenagers with extra cars, people don't have as much in their garages. We think with the additional parking that we're supplying, and it's only being 22 of the 74 homes, that's more than meets the needs for parking for this area. We also have parking on, let's see, both sides of this street. Parking on both sides of this street. Parking on one side of this street. Parking on one side of this street. And there's only one small section in here where we only have... Where we do not have parking on the street. So just one small roadside, but otherwise, we have parking either on both sides or on one side of the street. All right, so if you can delete this, because this is messy. Okay. All right, so am I going to go through and erase? Oh, I see. Okay. Let's go through and clean this up. Okay.
Good job.
We have a pretty site plan. I hate to... It's interesting, when you're presenting in Boise, you don't have the smart board. So I have not. I'd prefer to have my regular board. So there are just a couple additional issues I wanted to go through. We are, and this is Section 1.1C of the staff report, we are requesting a waiver to keep the South Slough open due to the large capacity of that facility. We'll meet all of the other irrigation district standards and standards set forth by planning staff and by your code, but we are requesting to keep that open because of the large size of that facility. We talked about we are going to be proposing... Staff had wanted for us to make sure that we stubbed, that we stubbed to this parcel. We are going to be proposing a stub to the east, and we'll work with ACHD on their requirements on how to provide signage for that stub street, but we will be providing a stub to the east. I think we were given an option of providing either from the east or from the south, and we are proposing to go ahead and provide that connection from the east. And I think we've already gone through our language for Section 2.1.2 for the water connection, and that language we've worked on with Bruce Freckleton on where we're going to be looping our water system from off of Eustach. So this is, yeah, Bruce's language. So those were our clarifications. Again, I just wanted to clarify that the areas where we are requesting the waiver on the parking, we more than meet your UDC standard for creating 50% of the spots for that area. And I think with the consideration of this being a senior community and the additional parking we're providing, we meet the intent of your code. And we have the developers are here this evening, and they're going to talk a little about their experience working with other senior communities and some of the assets that they're going to be proposing with this community. So I want one of them come up here. But any questions on any planning or design issues while I'm up here?
Counsel, any questions?
I have none.
Okay, thank you very much. I think they're deciding who's going to come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Pam Walsh, and I'm at 2218 West Woodlawn Avenue, Boise, 83702. And I'm representing Global Senior Housing, and we're excited to bring this project to the Meridian community. We've worked closely with staff. We've done a lot of research and have some background in working with seniors in assisted living. So we feel like this is a great segue into providing homes that are age-in-place and the lock-and-leave concept, so that the homeowners association is taking care of everything, and this homeowner can up and leave and go visit their children or winter somewhere else and still have a single-family home on their own lot. So that was really important to us, as we felt like this homeowner was looking to own their own home on their own lot versus a townhouse or condominium. So that's one thing we really think we bring to the Meridian community with this type of product. We, again, as Wendy said, feel like it's an ideal location, because there's a lot of shopping and amenities within walking distance, because we find that in our research, this particular homeowner at the 55-plus, they don't have often two cars. Some of them don't even have a car. They rely on transportation or walking. And that brings us to why we felt when we looked at the parking and designed the alley-load lots, that with that parking mix and the 281 spaces that we are providing, that that would be adequate for this kind of community and neighborhood to satisfy their parking I think everyone knows with the shift to the baby boomers, this is an important part of the... A segment of the market, and with retirees moving to Meridian, with all of our notoriety on being so desirable community to move to and live in, this gives them that smaller lot that the buyer's looking for with low maintenance. The clubhouse, we want to go back to the pool concept. That's kind of been bounced back and forth, because we've studied research in other areas on 55-plus, and we've looked at comments from other developers in our locale as to whether, you know, their actual homeowners wanted it and their homeowners associations wanted to take care of it. So I think we've gone back to, I don't think we have gone back to wanting to do a pool as part of that clubhouse. So we want to make sure that that's in the record. And I think the other important thing is we're going to phase it a little bit different now that the Blakeslee home is going to be part of Phase 1. We'll come in and do some different phasing, and we have proposed that to Josh and Bill to include more of the upfront entrance lots as part of that first phase, particularly that we're going to drive in and have that open space park there. And we've looked at all kinds of communities where they've taken that open space park and put... And we're not certain we'll do what we'll do here, but gazebo or outside fire pit. So it's a gathering place for the people of that neighborhood to get to know each other and more come together. And that's, I think, a bigger piece of the 55-plus, is they become friends within that community, within their neighborhood. I think we're... The other thing I wanted to introduce, and we did it planning, and I just have one copy, Josh, so I'll enter it into the record with you, and this was from planning. It's a little bit about the bungalows and the concept, but also some different elevations that we're proposing, because we don't want to go into everything that was part of the staff report as the same pitch roof. We want to do some varied pitches in the roofs there. So we're looking at a more upscale construction with some stonework, and primarily, it'll be single-level. There will be some bonus rooms incorporated throughout, because we've found that some buyers like to have that bonus room for their family to come, even though they're living on the main level. So we'll incorporate some bonus rooms, but primarily, it'll be a single-level community. We wanted you to see a little bit about our varied elevations. And I think that really puts it to rest, that we're excited to be able to build this product and provide it to the Meridian community, and we think it'll really take off and be a great success and well-received. So I thank you, unless you have any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Walsh, just, I've always been curious exactly how this works. Do you just market it to 55-plus, or do you literally restrict those who can purchase it to those who are 55 or older?
I think there's some legal issues on how far you can restrict the plat. That came up at planning and zoning on the legality. So we are marketing it to 55-plus, and that's where we're encouraging. What we've found is that people with children, they don't want to be in that mix of that type of neighborhood. So I don't think that we can absolutely restrict the deed. I might ask Wendy, can we actually... One owner of the...
So Mayor, Council members, Wendy Shreef again. So we'll, through our development agreement and through our CCNRs, we'll be specifying this as a 55 and over community. I don't know if legally we can restrict the deeds, but we will be doing it through the development agreement and through the CCNRs.
That probably works as an explanation.
Absolutely. But I would add that it is well-established that you can do those sort of restrictions. I don't want to give you legal advice, but there are other communities of this sort that have already been established in Meridian and have been quite successful.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Mr. Clerk will read those names of the people who signed up to indicate they're in favor or opposition, and if, when your name is read, if you would like to come forward and provide testimony, we'll invite you at that time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first on the list was Wendy Shreef, who just presented to us, signed up for. Next, we have Chip Gallagher, who indicated he might want to testify, but didn't indicate whether it was for, against, or neutral. So I don't know if Chip would like to come testify. The next three, I think, might be the applicants. I have Nick Walsh, Ron Walsh, and Pam Walsh. I think they're part of Global Senior Housing. Is that correct? They signed up for. And then the next, we have Marcus Tarn, or Tarn, I apologize on that last name, signed up for, but indicated did not wish to testify. I don't know if his mind has changed. Would you like to testify? No, okay. Then we have John Blakeslee, who signed up for but does not wish to testify. And then Julie Blakeslee signed up in favor but does not wish to testify. And then Scott Blakeslee, who signed up in favor but does not wish to testify. And that was all that signed up. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Take care of most of room. So is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this application? If you'll please state your name and address. You know the exercise there.
Yes. Kent Brown, 3161 East Springwood, Meridian, Idaho. When I worked for the city of Boise, we were the first ones to do common driveways. And we went out and looked at different things that we wanted to do, and the concept that they're providing and where they're asking for the reduced parking is exactly the concepts that we were trying to install at that time, and to have it more of a cottage lane feel by having it being closer, which is what you're going to get by having that reduced setback and so forth in there. And it didn't get approved that way, but that was some of the concepts that we'd seen as we traveled. And my kids live in Seattle, and we've looked at a bunch there, and they have that same concept, and having those extra parking stalls, and they're using it in the normal single-family housing and finding it to be good. And if they can have a pedestrian pathway that they can walk into them, people use that to access those homes. So that's all I had.
Thank you, Kent.
Thanks.
Okay, any further testimony? Hey, counsel, any questions for the applicant or staff? Does the applicant have any final comment? Any further questions from counsel? Would you like to have discussion first, or would you like to close the public hearing?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
We closed the public hearing on H.2016-0066.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, which carry.
Madam Mayor. Quick, before we get too far into it, so the applicant has changed their mind a little bit about what the amenity is that they're going to be providing, whether it be... The original applicant, they asked for a pool, and then it was an outdoor kitchen. Now they're asking for a pool again. So I guess, I want to make sure that that's in the development agreement right now, is one of the conditions. And so I don't know if you want to kind of leave it up to them or have that more locked down as to what the amenity is that they're going to be proposing.
Either satisfies the amenity.
Correct.
So they can say either or, or both. He can provide both. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Just, I guess, as discussion, I don't really want to be the one to make the motion, but I guess the reason I had asked that is, didn't know how it worked. You know, if you can restrict it for the first person buying, because you're the one selling it, or if it can be part of the CCNRs that no one under 55 can purchase a home in here, just my concern would be for the residents that purchase it, having been sold on, hey, it's only going to be 55-plus, and then they may move in there at 55, and, you know, 20 years later, be 75, and have half the subdivision be on their second, third, or fourth owner, and it be a bunch of teenagers, where we might have the concerns with the available parking. So it didn't sound like it really got nailed down, that they're not pushing for that, but they maybe could. And so that's... I'm definitely going to vote for it, because I feel that if someone's going to move in there, they'd better know what they're moving into. But I'd like to see it more nailed down, that if they're going to be advertising that, that the people will definitely know that's all that's going to be there, or we'd like 55-plus to move in here, but we can't... We're not really going to require it, kind of thing.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milo.
I'm pretty sure that CCNRs cover that. They did say that it would be in the CCNRs, as well as I'm... Jay, I mean, I can't speak for this project specifically, but generally, these type of communities have postings when you enter, "This is a 55 and older community," so that people know. I mean, unless those were taken down, but the CCNRs, which restrict a lot of specific things, should be enough to cover that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we don't normally get involved with reviewing CCNRs, and you have heard a commitment from the applicant that that's what they intend to do. It's usually something that we leave up to the market and the individuals. Sometimes we get phone calls of folks wanting us to enforce CCRs against their neighbors, and we always just say, hey, you read them when you moved in. If you want to change them, there are rules on how to do that. So we kind of just leave it up to the market. So I leave it at that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Madam Mayor, now I actually need some more clarification. And I think it goes back to Ty's question, or Councilwoman Palmer. Is it in the plat, or is it just in the CCNRs? They, the applicant didn't seem to think that it could be in the plat. But what you said kind of led me to believe that it could be.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Myla. Yeah, it's, it's one of those exceptions to the fair housing laws where you can discriminate based on age. And whether it's on the plat or in the CCNRs, I would recommend that you, making your approval, make it clear that you are accepting their pledge that they will take all necessary actions to make that a 55-and-older community.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Caleb.
Can I just add one, one clarification? I, I do not believe that the county surveyor wants to see a plat note on here that restricts ages. So, there may be other, and I'm not the expert in deeds and what can be put in a deed or not, that may be a tool. The CCNRs, Mr. Baird already addressed. But just to reiterate, I don't think we, as a city, want to be in the business of, being in the business of figuring out who lives here and kicking somebody out or getting in the middle of that, right? But I just want to clarify, the plat will not be where that is taken care of, because I do not believe any county, any county surveyor wants to see a note like that on the face of a plat. There are other tools to take care of those types of things. So, just a slight clarification.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I would encourage the applicant to get their own legal advice on how to assure, assure that their marketing gets them the intended result.
Thank you for the footnote, or the legal disclaimer. Exclamation point, whatever. Any other questions or comments? I, I would just make a comment. I, we need this kind of product in our community. I, I think it definitely is a, a need. We appreciate that you shared some of your marketing material to give a better vision of what you're trying to create. And I think it's an exciting project that our community can, can really get behind. It's, it's a new product. It's, that's not offered enough in our community. And I would definitely imagine there's a growing market for that.
Madam Mayor, quick, just, just from my own understanding. So, commission recommended that we put in the development agreement as a letter F, that the applicant be limited to residents who are 55 years of age or older. I didn't know if that was something that you were wanting to leave in there. Just as a point of clarification, or if you're going to remove that and kind of let the market dictate. Just, just so I'm clear when I'm making the findings documents.
I, I just hope that whatever we put in there is, this is how it's presented to us, and this is what we're approving. But we're not going to go in and be the police and kick people out of their home.
And then...
For what it's worth, it's a civil issue.
Yeah. I'm, I'm with you. One other point of clarification, the applicant has requested that the, their section of the south slough remain open, just as you're making your decisions, that be considered as well. So...
So, Madam Mayor, on that one, it's, it's, and Josh just can maybe pull that over real quick. It's, it's condition 1.1.1C right now. That requires applicant to obtain that waiver for you to, to cover the, the south slough. And just as, we had another project just a little bit further to the west earlier this year. The south slough is a large lateral, pretty common practice for you all to grant that waiver. So, it does require a pretty large diameter pipe to be, to be, to be used when covering it. So, it's, it's pretty standard practice for that to be left open.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I will make the motion. I move, we approve H-2016-0066, and not have to pipe the south slough and accept the parking level as presented.
And either amenity, the pool, or the...
Yeah, as long as they meet whatever. Whichever they end up going with, as long as it meets the requirement.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Myla.
Just apologize. Condition 2.1.2, that Public Works condition that we were modifying, just whether that was something that you were comfortable doing. I didn't mean to interrupt. I apologize. Just, just to make sure that that was considered in your motion.
Part of your recommendation and, and discussion. So, I imagine that was included. Mr. Palmer?
On your screen here, this is a, they're recommending, or asking that two connection points to Eustick Road be allowed.
Yes. So, be included in the motion.
And second agree. Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Myla.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes must carry. That was a team effort. Thank you.
I, I apologize for interrupting.
Okay. Item 8C is the first reading of ordinance 16-1709. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 16-1709. An ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 1, Section 8B1, Meridian City Code, collection of solid waste and recyclable materials to change the collection at commercial premises to commence at 4:00 a.m. and providing an effective date.
You've heard the reading of this ordinance. Is there anyone who would like to hear it read in its entirety? It's always an option, Ralph. Counsel, any discussion on this? Would you like it next week for the second reading and, and then the week following a third?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
We need to make sure that it is noted that next week at the second reading will be the public hearing on it also. And that's what I, my recommendation would be.
That it's listed as second reading and a public hearing.
That's what Mills said.
Okay.
Second.
Hi, I don't...
Was that a motion or just a...
No.
Okay. Under 9A, Department of Reports, council in front of you is a request to reappoint Josh Everts to the Historic Preservation Commission. He has been serving on our HPC and has been a huge contributor to the discussion, the ideas, and much of the direction that they're moving towards. So, I would ask for your confirmation of this appointment.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I can't think of somebody better suited to continue to fill this position, given that he has certainly put his money where his mouth is, investing in, in Meridian, especially in the historic part of Meridian. And with only projects he's already done, but with what's coming up, hopefully in the future for downtown. And so, with that, I enthusiastically move that we approve Resolution 161174, reappointing Josh.
Second.
I have a motion and several seconds to confirm the appointment of Josh Everts to HPC. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Myla.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Item 9B is under a CDBG, and I will turn this over to Sean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The slides are not up yet. I forgot a bullet, and Caleb's graciously helping me put that bullet on. Thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight, council. I came to you last week on Tuesday. We talked about a substantial amendment to amend the program year 2015 action plan. I want to briefly go over the slides that we talked about last week, just so we can cover that. And then I'll cover the changes and the things that council had asked for and some clarifications. Once again, we do substantial amendments when fundings change or scope of, or scope of the project change to some degree that we absolutely have to amend the action plan. We're tied to that by our own con plan. It does trigger the citizen participation plan. I asked council last week if I could notice for a substantial amendment. I did that yesterday. So, 30 days from yesterday, we would have a, a public hearing to ask council to rule on that and have, have some, some public weigh-in. The way that we got here, in terms of asking for a substantial amendment, we had the H2 segment of the Five Mile Creek pathway. We, we've been waiting on some easements. Parks and Recreation has made some headway in getting those easements. However, they just haven't made enough headway for us to move forward with that project. We need to secure all three of those easements. So, what I'd like, well, I'll move forward with that. The Idaho Avenue sidewalks project actually finished well under budget. So, that left some money in the coffers there. The Boys and Girls Club brush-up that we had approved the year before, they went ahead and moved with CSI because they were on-site, and they were able to get that done a lot faster than the CDBG program would have allowed them to. And then we do have some residual admin from a few years that we leave as unallocated. One point of correction from last week, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, you had asked specifically, what could we do if we had unallocated admin, if we came under budget? And you asked if we can give it, if we can give it back. And I did say that we could give it back. The correction is, you can't give back, and there's no mechanism for giving back one small portion of money. You give back all of CDBG, or you don't give it back at all. And so, that's the, the point of clarification there. So, I apologize. It's a big one, but I wanted to make sure that we corrected that. And then, I'm sorry. And then, Madam Mayor, your point following that was, but would we pay a penalty? And my answer to you was, yes, it may not be monetary. And it wouldn't be monetary if we did that. The penalty would be, is once we closed down the CDBG program, and I want to make sure that we're clear on this, we would be tied to all of the projects that we've done for the next five years. And so, we'd be, whether, the monitoring of those would all come out of the city project. It's, they're the city hide, I guess, is what you would call it. So, that's where the hit would come, was that we would be taking care of it without the benefit of having CDBG to do those things. So, I just wanted to make sure that we made that clarification. So, staff's recommendation, and this is also based on the conversations that we had last week at council, the recommendations to substantially amend would be to reallocate $150,000 of that to Public Works. And that would be to continue on with the streetlight project that we'd already approved for 2016. But we'd get started on that a little bit earlier, and we'd still have streetlight projects to do that are already in the budget for next year. We'd also reallocate, or I'd ask council to reallocate $30,000 to Neighbor Works Boise to their Home Buyers Assistance Program. We worked well with them. They've done a fantastic job the last few years of putting families in homes through that program. And I'd like to make H2 an alternate project. I wouldn't want that to come off the action plan, because the case may be, and the case probably will be, that those easements will come up, and parks will be able to move forward with that project at some point. So, taking it out of the action plan and having to put it back in, if they want to do that again in a future year, would kind of be redundant. So, keeping it in there is an alternate for something to trigger if we did get those. And then, Madam Mayor, you did ask about sewers and if they could be used, or if CDBG dollars could be used for that. And so, what I have done is, in the announcement, in the, in the, sorry, in the paper, I did announce that one of the alternate projects would be to reallocate, not reallocate, I'm sorry, that's a, just...
That's my word. Sorry.
It's okay. So, alternate project would be to do sewers, using the, as an alternate project from 2015 as well. And I have a couple of things to show you, Madam Mayor, about sewers, after talking to Public Works, that would answer some of those questions that you had.
Thank you.
And so, what does this substantial limit do? This one is actually a pretty hefty one. But it allows us to start projects a little earlier. I, I did mention last week that because of the way that the funding works and the congressional budget and when it's approved, oftentimes, projects don't even start until the early part of the spring. And that's just getting into the design phase, or even just RFP, or getting a designer to do that, or an architect to do that. And so, we end up building or constructing somewhere in the fall. And that's usually a little bit too far out. And it keeps pushing that budget a little bit further and a little bit further. This would actually take us back to a small reset. We'd be starting on a pretty big-ticket project, and a pretty big-impact project early, and we'd be able to complete that within the next year. And then still have funds in the next year to continue on with streetlight projects where we see fit. And it also allows some late phase. So, we'll be, we'll have projects that are still queued up. So, we'll still be able to take care of those as that new funding becomes available. And then November 15th is the date that I have on the, on the announcement for a public hearing. And so, we asked about potential projects, and I asked for some feedback. Madam Mayor and councilmembers, you did give me some feedback. The one that I had brought was just an idea of a home rehab program, or one of the few municipalities that don't have a home rehab program for emergency rehab or ADA. I did tell you a couple of sad stories, all of true. And one of them was the most recent as, two weeks ago, where we did have an individual who had his home, home broken into and about $15,000 worth of damage after being injugant. And he has no way to fix that. So, just an idea with the home rehab program, if we were to look at something like that, the, the key thing there is it's just like a facade improvement, almost. You do roofs, you do ADA ramps, you do front steps. You can even do walk-in showers for, for ADA accessibility. And the difference between those projects with Davis Bacon is, there's no Davis Bacon on home rehab when you're doing LMI or things like that. So, it's a, it's a really big difference there. And it kind of takes some of the weight off the program as well, and still makes an, still, still makes an impact. And then, Madam Mayor, you asked about sewer projects, and there are several opportunities in the next few years within the LMI. And then façades, you did also ask about façades as well. And I'll give you a quick update on that and the slum and blight plan as we have now. And so, these are three, three areas within the LMI. The green area there is the LMI. You've seen that picture before. And those are the years attached to. And so, we have Rose Circle, which is a, a small trailer park that's down there off of Franklin and Meridian. And that is scheduled for 2020, and that's water and sewer, would need to be replaced. 2017, which may have been a good project in another, in another time, that's about two, Second, Northwest Second Street, I think. And those are behind homes is where they would be replaced. And 2018, which is actually a recommendation for me, would be, if that was something that the city wanted to do, to take a look at that project off of Washington, similar to, I believe, and Public Works can correct me if I'm wrong, but similar to that Northwest Two and a Half Street, or Northwest Two Second Street, that would be behind some homes there. And it's slated for 2017. So, the city could enter into, Public Works could enter into an application phase this year. And we would put that into the application for the CDBG program for the very next year, which would be the 2018 calendar year. This is a map that was not intended necessarily for council. It was intended for just my scoping committee for the slum and blight assessment that we're conducting. As you know, that in order for us to do slum and blight activities, we have to have a plan now. The URA no longer suffices for HUD, because it's over 10 years old. Currently, we're in negotiations with the contractor who we've selected, who we're going to select, in order to bring them down into, into our world for budget. So, there's a couple of things that we want to shave off there. But what you're looking at here is that green area would be where we could do facade improvements. And this area can flex based on the assessment and the plan. So, it's JUB engineers that we're currently working with. And as they go ahead and assess and define that area that we'd be able to do those, we'd be looking for contributing factors to slum and blight, deteriorating facades, unsympathetic facades for buildings. And so, that area there is, is where. And so, I'm hoping that that would give you some idea and an update as, as to how that would work. Currently, MDC does still have an alternate project to do facades in their budget. And so, once this plan is, is done, and we've actually got an area to do so, MDC could possibly trigger that, because it's an alternate project in prior year. And we'd be able to fund that and do some facade improvements. So, staff will stand for any questions. I just want to make note of, again, it was noticed yesterday. I did notice it with the intention of having sewer as an alternate, because that was something that came available. And you, what you want to do is, you want to make sure that you notice, especially for a CDBG action plan amendment, notice for as much as you're going to attempt to do. And whatever council decides to do, if council decides to line item out come November 15th, when I ask you to, to rule on this, that's fine. We can actually go down. You just can't go up. So, if I don't notice it, we can't do it. So, I wanted to make sure that we had it in there. Staff will stand for any questions, ma'am.
Thank you, Sean. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Sean, we're looking at $365,000 is to reallocate?
Negative, councilman. It's actually going to be a hundred...
I thought I was reading it wrong.
I apologize. The reallocate, and it should be, that $100,000 at the bottom there is an alternate project. So, it's about $180,000 that we're looking to reallocate.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Any other, yes, Ms. Myla.
Sean, so, the gentleman that you're talking about with the house that got broken into, so he had no insurance?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Myla, I don't know that. And I apologize. I didn't follow through with it. I, I took the call, because they, they always come to me. That's just where they end up coming to. And I end up telling them that I, we don't have a program. And I try to... and I try to push them to other projects. So I apologize. I didn't ask those questions.
Thank you.
This, this, these are just for discussion during the public comment.
Madam Mayor, yes, it's all up for public comment. Every part of this is, uh, you know, a public process for the, for our action plan, for our con plan. Uh, and it's also for council and mayor to, to weigh in on in terms of what projects should we be doing and should, are these good projects to do? I tried to stack the deck with projects that council has already seen in some form or fashion from another year or for the next year. That way, we can, uh, potentially, I, maybe I can persuade council to go ahead and do these because we're just moving on 2016 a little faster than we would be, uh, and that actually helps everybody out on that end. Um, however, if council decided not to do that, we, that's, that's council's, uh, it's their prerogative.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, are you comfortable? Um, this has already been posted for, um, public comment, so-
Madam Mayor, that's true.
We'll just put this out for, um, the November-
15.
15th, okay. Thank you for this informative presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council.
Okay, item 9C is under community development, uh, discussion, uh, an updated presentation per council's request after our October meeting.
Madam Mayor, uh, yes, just to follow up, uh, and hopefully you all saw the updated, uh, memo in your packet with some proposed underline and strike through language. Um, I do have a couple of, just 'cause that was Tuesday night and the, the clerk is really hounding us on deadlines. I had to buy three o'clock on Thursday, had to have something in.
Wow.
I wasn't, no, I'm just kidding.
See, there you go.
But, no, I'm, I wasn't able to vet that language through, uh, the planners, all the planners. And so I do have a couple of additional changes I'd like to show you now, or as soon as I can find that. It's largely the same as what's in your packet, but there are a couple of, um, uh, redline changes that I wanted to show you real quick so you could see what's on the table. And then, again, Councilman Borton asked for some more examples, and I do have some examples of that. So I apologize. I did not have this pulled up before my turn. So there is the updated, and if it's, the red is the, the changes from what you saw in the packet. Um, the underline and strike through is what you saw, and then what, what, if it's not underlined or struck through, it's how we currently, um, include this condition in, in our staff reports. Uh, so again, the idea here is just to, to provide some certainty for both the development community and staff as what the level of expectation is when we're reviewing single-family homes that, uh, front collectors or arterial streets. Um, we did discuss parks last time. I did not include that. It seemed like the folks that did give me their, um, where they stand, that wasn't something that we wanted to pursue. Um, and single level, uh, you can see that that's added there at the bottom that we did add that exemption, that single-story structures are exempt. So we can maybe come back to that. It wasn't night and day over what was in your packet, but again, some kind of wordsmithing with staff that they thought maybe this would make this a little more, provide a little bit more clarity, but it's largely the same as what you saw in the packet and hopefully had to, had to look at. So just to run through a couple of more examples, so we went through a handful last week. Um, here's another one where the rear of the home that, that faces, uh, the arterial, this is something that complies. Um, it has, there's a, a mix of materials. You can see there's a different siding type, um, two different changes in materials, and they have, um, some, some popouts with some, uh, livable space. So you can kind of see, um, that this, this home would comply, but largely, it's probably going to be screened by, you know, you obviously see the change of materials up here. And I'm not saying this is bad. I'm just showing you some examples of what comply. Um, here's the floor plan. You can kind of see the popouts for that livable space on the rear side. Not a whole lot of modulation there. Um, there is some, there's, you know, uh, there is, it's not just like a, a flat, a fat, flat wall. Um, but it's, it's, there's not a whole lot of architectural, um, interest in this, in this elevation. But it, again, it complies, and it's, it's probably enough to not provide that large massing. And you're probably going to get two colors as well, although we took colors out of that. So they're just kind of a, a quick example. Um, here's another one in a way that they, uh, conformed. Let's see, the rear elevation, uh, is going to be this elevation. And again, largely what they're doing with this, again, you're going to have a mixed materials. This is a recess. On the recess, you really aren't going to see that too much because, again, this area here is, doesn't step out, it steps back. Um, so if, if there's a recess, which we allow, it just doesn't provide a whole lot of, of relief. But again, this, I, I don't, I don't personally think there's necessarily anything wrong with it. Lots of windows, even on the last one, there's, there's windows and, again, a mix of materials. But this is something that would comply because it does have a recess and two different types of material. Um, here's another example of a home. This one has, I think this one, I'm sorry, it's so small. The rear elevation, I think they have an awning or an overhang over their back door, patio cover over their back door, and a real slight change in materials right here. This, this is almost like a band that kind of runs mid-belly of the, of the structure. So I guess the point with this one is, we don't have in our condition right now, we don't say the change in material needs to be at least 10% or 5% or 2% even of anything. It could just be a, a change in material, but we don't have a minimum change, like 50/50 or 80/20 or whatever. Um, so here, it's marginal, but again, it, it complies. Um, and, and again, they've got some nice windows and they're doing something else that we, we aren't requiring, that they're just doing that make, make it a nicer, um, facade. Here's, here's one that they've added a, the third, third bay garage that actually provides that, um, that popout area for, uh, that elevation that faces the, the street and really helps. You can see, here's the side view, um, helps that it, um, provides more relief both in the roof. You get two roof, you know, if they didn't have this, the, it would just be the, the single peak, um, roof, but they added this third bay garage that gives you two, two different roof planes. And then again, you have the change in materials. So, you know, just a couple more examples of kind of what we see typically on projects, and sometimes we have to work with them, sometimes we don't. You know, again, these ones comply though. Um, these ones wouldn't require us to do anything else. I did want to, sorry, I didn't mention this when I, um, last week, we had talked about, um, how many of these and where is that line? We did include in talking with this, two or more of the following, and we had some conversations last week about one, and we just thought that wasn't enough. To have just one of those things, especially if we're talking about not having quantities of a change in material, if you have 5% of something and a change in materials, and you say that's enough, I think we could get burned to some degree with that. If, if you believe we should even be looking at these in the first place. But if we're going to regulate this, we, we thought two or more of these, uh, seemed appropriate. But I did just want to point that out because we talked last week about potentially having one of these, one or more, and we, we, we thought as staff that two or more seemed appropriate. So, um, with that, I hope that provides you what you need. And again, this isn't, right now, we're not looking at this becoming code, um, but we would kind of standardize it with each condition and, and regularly apply this to projects. Um, we could codify it. Um, this is really more meant as a director's determination type of a thing and for direction, but, um, but again, any feedback you want to provide is, is appreciated. And with that, Madam Mayor, I would stand for any, any questions or clarifications you may need.
Thank you, Caleb, for bringing this back and, and giving more detail, um, as to, not something that's in code, but, uh, a director's, um, specif- specifications, short of something better. Uh, counsel, any questions, comments?
Looks good.
I, I think you've provided great detail. You've answered any of the, um, comments, uh, from the last discussion.
Okay. Thanks for allowing us to clarify this. I think it'll really help. Thank you.
You. Uh, item 9D is under, oh, there's Dave. I didn't even see him here. I can see that, um, November's going to be really scruffy. We're starting to see it amongst the faces now.
I'm trying. I got this stuff. It's not working yet.
Hi, Dave.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, happy to be here tonight. I am here to give you an update on the council chambers technology refresh project. Um, so here goes. We are coming back to council next week with, uh, the intent to award the project to a vendor that has been selected through our criteria process. Um, more information will obviously be provided next week, of numbers and everything, but you're welcome to ask any questions you have now. Um, I just want to reiterate some of the things that we're going to see out of this and what we're really getting out of this product. So... So improvements that we're looking at with this change is we will have better audience viewing. We'll be doing four TV displays. These two here will be removed, the ones that are facing you, because you, you obviously can see your monitors at this point. But the two facing the audience will be there. They'll be larger, and then there'll be a couple more back further for better audience viewing. That'll also give us the ability to view presentations and whatnot during roundtable settings, which is good. They'll be on tilting mounts, so. We'll be changing out microphones with microphones that pick up your audio a lot better, better. So that way, you shouldn't have near as many problems with needing to eat, eat your mic. There'll also be a visible light on them. You'll have the option of muting and unmuting. The clerk station and the staff table also have that functionality to mute and unmute if they need to as well for all of the council seats. We are replacing your monitors with touchscreens. So they're 22-inch touchscreens, much the same size, but you'll be able to touch, do annotations, do markup, whatever, all through your touch panel. Um, there'll also be a keyboard and mouse though, so you can switch between that view and a computer as well. So you can surf the internet, pull up whatever you need to packets, et cetera.
Can I ask you a question on that one?
Absolutely.
So will, will that give us the, the ability to display, to mess with it here and have everyone else see what we're doing?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Yep. You can markup, you can do pointer, you can do all of that. So that is something that we will, um, the clerk will be able to grant to whoever needs it at the time. So that way, you're not all trying to markup all over the top of each other, which would be kind of hard to follow, so.
Oh, the clerk has the power.
Yes, yes. We like giving the clerk power. It's good. Um, the clerk and staff table also get touch panels, so they'll have the same functionality as far as the markup goes. Um, they will have control over the entire system. There will also be, which is not mentioned on here, a mobile control option. So that way, if we need it in a roundtable type setting or whatever, we can do it there. We will be replacing our Elmo that is in here with a dock, a ceiling dock cam that will be near the clerk's workstation. So that way, you have a little more flexibility and plans and things that we can bring in. But we'll also be able to capture those for the record instead of having to worry about after the meeting or whatever. Actually be able to take a snapshot of whatever that is to keep for the record. The podium here, we'll begin new, new touch panel as well. Um, obviously, this beast has been kind of problematic over the past many years. We plan to resolve all of that with a new touch panel that's way easier to use. You don't have to worry about the custom controls. It's going to be standard stuff that you're used to doing on a touchscreen. So swipe to advance. You'll have markup tools that you click on with a finger and you can circle things, whatever. So great stuff. Will be a lot easier to use for all of our presenters, and it's just standard Microsoft PowerPoint tools. So really easy to use. Most people are very familiar with them, so.
So we will be able to, um, touch this, fill it, um, figure out if it really is intuitive and for-
Absolutely. We'll be doing that beforehand even. So as part of this, we're actually, our, the vendor that we've selected is going to do a full mockup of the system, and we are going to go down there and see it, hands-on, make sure it works. If any of you would like to come, you're more than welcome to, but it is not local, so there's a bit of traveling involved. We do plan on taking a handful of non-technical users with us as well though, because we don't want us to be the, the IT folks be the gauge of, hey, look, is that user-friendly or not? So that would be horrible, so.
Mr. Palmer.
Where will that be at?
That will be at their headquarters in Salt Lake.
When?
So if we award next week, then we'll be looking at two to three weeks for all the equipment to get in, and the following week, it would be set up. So about four, three to four weeks out from next Tuesday. Right around the holidays.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So Dave, I need to know if I'm going to be able to see my monitor. I don't know if it's the way this is angled or the light above it.
It is the angle, because I have to tilt my eye on occasion.
I actually use this a lot. Because the glare on this is so bad.
We have-
I'm hoping that we can fix that.
We're going to get, um, those are all glossy displays, if I recall, and we're going to get some matte screen protectors that help with the glare because it's a big problem. This one's not near as bad just because it's more of a matte surface. Um, but the other thing that's nice about it is, these are not very easy to adjust. The, the new displays that we're getting, you can push down on them and they go down real easy, and if you start pulling up, they come right up.
Okay.
Like nothing. It's, it's really cool. So that should help as well, so you can adjust if needed, so. On the streaming side, this goes into a little bit in here, cameras. We're going to be replacing the cameras with some new HD cameras, so we'll be, um, able to fully cap- capture the chambers, but also do so in a roundtable setting. Um, that will be controllable by the clerk, staff, or in the green room. The streaming will be way better quality. Right now, it's very poor, and you can't see presentations when they're on there. We'll be able to see presentations. We'll be able to do picture-in-picture options if we'd like, um, picture-by-picture. So that way, if you want to have the person presenting and also the presentation next to them, we can do that. Um, we're going to set it up so that there's a easy one-touch button where you can basically hit a button and it'll start doing the streaming for you. And hit a button again, and it'll stop, which will enable us to do streaming of other meetings where maybe we don't have somebody from the city that's able to sit there and manage that system. They'll be able to just push a button to start it, push a button and stop it. So we can do P&amp;Z meetings if we want. We could do other commission meetings if we want to, which would be nice. We are also including a mobile solution so that we can better capture and stream town hall meetings and other events that are important to our citizens. So, sky's the limit. For the roundtable setting, I've mentioned a few times, but we are including new microphones. We struggled this last year and the year before with what we had, even though we had to bring it in, rent it. Um, these are going to be some cool little portable mics that are usable just about anywhere. We'll be able to use them in this setting if we want, if we needed somebody out in the audience to use them, or if we wanted to go into roundtable setting. Um, they'll be usable for all those functions. Yeah. So to sum it all up, better audience viewing, improved presentation experience for both you and our audience. Um, the system is a lot easier to use, simplified and streamlined. Should make our clerks and staff's lives a lot easier as far as managing presentations and other things that come their way. Um, cameras will be a lot better, so streaming will be improved. Our, one, one area that's been a concern is the audio levels in here, and so that's going to be addressed as well. It affects the streaming. It affects out in the lobby and whatnot. So we'll be able to control the feedback, um, by proper zoning of the speakers and proper DSP. And then streaming. So that is what we're looking to do. It will come to you guys next week in the form of an award for a sizable lump of money. So I stand for questions.
Counsel, any questions at this time?
Amen.
Bless you. Okay, I don't see any. We appreciate your update, and, um, we'll see you back next week.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
Item 10- Item 10A is ordinance 16-1710. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this riveting ordinance by title only?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll try to get through this as expeditiously as I can. City of Meridian ordinance number 16-1710, file number H-2016-0093. An ordinance of the City of Meridian granting annexation and zoning for parcels of land generally located near the northeast corner of South Eagle Road and East Amity Road, in the southwest quarter of Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Section 28, southeast corner of North Meridian Road and East Carmel Drive, in the southwest quarter of Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Section 06, east side of North Ten Mile Road, north of West Eustick Road, in the southwest quarter of Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Section 35, 3955 East Eustick Road, in the northwest quarter of Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Section 04, 2910 West Franklin Road, in the southwest quarter of Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Section 11, 6175 North Linder Road, in the northeast quarter of Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Section 26, 3275 East Amity Road, in the northwest quarter of Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Section 33, 1635 South Stoddard Road, in the northwest quarter of Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Section 24, 3539 North Ten Mile Road, in the southeast quarter of Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Section 34, 49 parcels in the Black Rock subdivision, generally located north of East Lake Hazel Road, between South Locust Grove Road and South Eagle Road, in the south half of Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Section 32, and 364 West Malta Drive, in the northwest quarter of Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Section 26, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, and annexing certain lands and territory, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian, as requested by the City of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of said lands, from RUT zoning district in Ada County, to R4, low-density residential district, 53.25 acres, and R8, medium-density residential district, 11.64 acres, and C-C, community business district, 2.61 acres, in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Is there anyone who would like to hear it read in its entirety?
It was the entirety. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Seeing how nobody wants to hear the rest of that, and the clerk did such a nice job on it, we all understand it. I move we approve ordinance number 16-1710 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve item 10A. There's no conversation, or discussion, or request to have the title read again. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmember Mylum.
Hello?
Here?
Aye.
Just kidding.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Eyes, motion carried.
One away.
Counsel, any items for future agendas? I do have upcoming events. We have our faith leaders luncheon, if you intend to go, I hope you have told Peggy that. It is Thursday, October 20th, at 11:30. And we have the Drug Takeback and Shred Day, at Valley Shepherd. Drug Takeback and Shred Day is on Saturday at St. Luke's from 10:00 to 2:00. This is your opportunity to shred all that, those old bank statements, and credit card statements, and all of that stuff. And, take your old prescriptions in as well. So, do it all in one big swoop. Economic Excellence Breakfast, hosted by the Chamber, on Tuesday, the 25th, from 7:30 to 9:00 at the West Ada School District Room, and you need to register in advance. And the town hall meeting on Wednesday, the 26th, at 6:30 at the Compass Charter School on Ten Mile and Cherry. It's on Cherry Lane, near Ten Mile. Counsel, I did also give you a packet of information about the United Way Drive, presentations are next week, and we have a series of events that will be trying to raise funds for the city, its Care for Others campaign, and we'll be having traveling root beer floats, cakewalk, pancake breakfast. We would love to have you come and join us in preparing breakfast for staff members, and those standing in line at early voting. They'll have an opportunity to buy breakfast, to go to a good cause. We have all kinds of, there's raffle prizes, and a silent auction, if you'd like to donate an item for the silent auction, also to benefit United Way. We would love to have you join us and contribute. So with that said, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise, I would entertain a motion to close, I mean, to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion to close, or to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.